Okay, now you're live.
Okay, let's call the order of the special meeting of February 2nd. Roll call, please.
Prior to roll call, I do have to make the teleconferencing meeting procedures, so I'll go through those quickly. The procedures adopted for this meeting meet or exceed the standards set forth in the Governor Newsom's Order and Dash twenty, which allows public meetings like this one to be held by teleconference to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. At this time, I will conduct roll call and would like to ask the Chair to recognize me afterward to confirm certain matters to the record. Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Baroche?
Yes.
Councilmembers Afar?
Here.
Mayor Perkins or Vice Mayor Perkins is absent this evening, and Mayor Hudson?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have the floor again.
Based on the responses to roll call, the record should reflect that all council members can hear the proceedings clearly. If there are no objections, the record will further reflect that each council member believes, based on voice or facial recognition or otherwise, that the persons representing themselves to be council members are in fact council members.
Yes.
Yes.
See, see no objection. I will turn the meeting back over to the mayor with a reminder that all votes must be taken by roll call.
Okay, thank you very much. Public comment is open. Now is the time for anyone in the attendees to address the council on any item. Let's start off with not on tonight's agenda. Is anyone wishing to speak to an item not on tonight's agenda? Going once, going twice, public comment is closed, we're on to new business. Item 3.1 Innovation and Technology Advisory Committee Interviews and Appointments. Is there someone that wants, I have one attendee that wishes to speak to that before we do interviews, can we let them in, Christina? And please identify yourself. Caller, you on?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, hi, Mayor and council members. I'm a resident of San Ramon. I had actually raised my hand for public comment.
That's okay.
And then I wasn't. Okay, so I have a public comment regarding the technology that we're using these days are highly controlled and manufactured overseas. So I have a lot of concern about the advisory committee interviews and appointments. I hope that none of the interviewees or the ones that you will be appointing would have any associations politically or privately or commercially that have any financial interests with overseas manufacturers or even service providers such as Zoom that can possibly compromise our city and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, your timing was perfect. It was the right time to speak to it. Okay, what we're gonna do is the interviews now, we're gonna have 11 interviews. We have to pick four people, one from at-large, two that are working in the industry now, and one alternate. So we're running a little bit behind this. The way it's going to work is each of us is going to have one question. I'll start it off for each of the 11 people. Please ask the same question to everyone. And they'll have about two minutes to respond. I'll go first. Councilmember Afar, if you're ready, you can do second. Okay, Mark, you were last, so you're going last. That means Shridhar, you're third. Sarah, welcome tonight. You ready to go? Sorry, we're a little bit slow, but I'll try and slow up my speaking and ask you the first question. We're gonna do away with, it's a little different than the last time when you made an opening and a closing because we're going through so many people. So let's just hit you with a question right out of the gate. Do you have any experience with planning or implementing smart city principles?
All right, um, thank you all for having me. Great to be here. Nice to see you guys again. To answer your question straightforward, I don't have any experience implementing smart city principles. I have, I have other experience on technology and innovation. I assume that that will be a question later on down the line though, so. Yeah, thank you for your question. I'll end it there.
Thank you. Oh, I like this already. She's learned. Quick is good. Councilmember Afar, you have a question.
Hi Sarah, thank you so much for applying and interviewing.
Of course, thank you for having me here.
So my question is about volunteering. And if you volunteered for an organization, what were some of your challenges? How did you overcome them? And what did success look like for you?
Okay, so is this just in terms of like in the space of innovation?
Anywhere, anywhere where it was an unpaid volunteer position. You know, these committees are unpaid volunteer positions, so.
Yeah, right, of course. Well, I have plenty of volunteering experience in a whole range of like fields, but a lot of them share common threads in terms of the issues that we encounter, right? And when it comes to volunteering, I think the biggest issue that we nearly always encounter is like community and volunteer involvement and like commitment. Because like you said, it's an unpaid opportunity. Sometimes people sign up for things and they just don't show up, you know? So there have been times I've like registered for an event to volunteer or even help organize an event. I show up and then half of the people who signed up to volunteer don't show. So we don't have the manpower needed to like get this thing going. But what we do, I think that what volunteering has taught me is thinking on the fly is absolutely key. So when people don't show up for the commitments that they volunteered to volunteer on, it's just a kind of all hands situation and I have ended up, I and my fellow volunteers have ended up assuming a lot more roles than we anticipated having for this event. But um, that's okay, because when you're, when you're a volunteer, you kind of accept the responsibility that this might happen, you know? So for me, success doesn't look like everything going to plan because oftentimes it won't. Success looks like everybody's still being satisfied at the end of the day, you know?
So do you have a specific example, maybe, what you can say, you did this, this is what the challenge was, this is what, you know, how you overcame it? And this is what success was, just maybe one.
Sure, so I was a volunteer back when I was at Cal Poly. I was in, I was a volunteer with the College of Engineering and it was our responsibility to, we were called engineering ambassadors, but basically what we did was we, we led tours in the College of Engineering with like prospective students and their parents. But there were times, there was one time that I can recall in particular that I was scheduled to lead one of these tours with a fellow volunteer ambassador. But my fellow volunteer ambassador unfortunately could not show. So it was me and then a room, frankly, full of prospective students and their parents. And how I, how I handled this situation was I took my handy dandy cellphone and blasted all the other ambassadors and said, is anyone free to help me, you know, conduct this tour? And until I heard back, I didn't let the success of the tour depend on it. I just got started right away, you know? And I made that whole community of parents and students, my community of parents and students. And what was important to me was to let them know that despite this small kind of glitch, everything was fine, you know, like we were still going to give them the tour that they signed up to get at the end of the day. So that's one off the top of my head.
Thank you for sharing.
Where'd he go? Shridhar, where'd you go? You scared him away. Mark, you wanna bail him out and take the third question?
Sure, sure. Hi, Sarah.
Hey, how are you doing, Councilmember Armstrong?
Doing fine, thank you. My question is, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your skills in this innovation and technology space?
So I think that in, so technology and innovation can be used in a lot of ways in a city. It can be used to optimize internal operations in the city, and I think San Ramon does that very well. I think it can also be used to optimize communications with the public, and I think that's one area that we can improve. But thirdly, and possibly most importantly, we can utilize private-public partnerships with existing technologies to optimize our cities. So for example, when it comes to like data collection, traffic analysis, public transit, time optimization, there are tons and tons of private companies and startups developing technologies to work to optimize municipalities, and they're looking for cities that will work with them. And that is one hugely untapped market that I think a lot of people maybe are uncomfortable exploring because it's such a new concept. But it's such an incredible opportunity to explore technologies that can make San Ramon more technologically optimized and better, more efficiently operating. So I think those are the three main areas that tech and innovation in San Ramon.
Shridhar Baroche, you're back. You have a question.
Yeah, sorry, small technical issues while interviewing.
That is so, that is so relevant.
Yep, so thank you, Sarah, for applying and good to see you. So which city, yeah, so which city service you think that need most, most needed service? That either need to be added or enhanced for better community service?
So in terms of technology and innovation, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
Um, so as I mentioned in my last answer, I think that one area for growth in technology and innovation is traffic and public transit. So I think as, as we get more dense housing in San Ramon, and we're, we're seeing a lot of dense housing developments underway, a lot less people are going to want to have personal, you know, private vehicles, are going to want to rely more on buses and stuff. But all of that effort will be for nothing if we don't have a really efficient, really effective, maybe like app or way of tracking the times of these public transit systems, et cetera. And I think another area that we can really utilize technology and innovation, believe it or not, is in our waste management because the city of San Ramon has this great waste management system, trash recycling and compost collection. But I don't think that households are optimizing their waste management because they don't maybe understand how the system works. Maybe they don't know when the trash pickup is for big, large items, et cetera. They don't know what can be composted even. They don't know where San Ramon waste is managed. So what better way to communicate that to the citizens than with, you know, tech with a website or a page or an app or something. So waste management of transit hugely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Shridhar, do you have some follow-up?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. You were the first one out of the gate, so you're the first one that got the, all the glitches and everything. And we will be deciding and voting tonight, probably within the next 12 hours. Hopefully not 12 hours, but sometimes these things take longer than 10 minutes, but I really appreciate you keeping pretty much to the timeframe. I'm sorry, we got a late start and I wish you well. We'll see how it turns out tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it. I'll let you guys go, but I look forward to hearing back.
No, thank you for applying. Okay. Bye, Sarah. Our next applicant, Sandy Bednarga, Benaga?
He.
Your name when you get up.
He logged out, but he's logging back in. I just sent, yeah.
Well, it's the night for it.
Been going back and forth.
Maybe he's been hooked up with Shridhar.
I think he saw that the other interview was in process, so he was.
Did we get two Shridars for a minute? Did you see that?
I just switched from my back.
Sandy, come back, come back. So he's logging back in, you said, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll give him a minute. He's not in attendees. He's in the panel. There, Sarah, okay.
She's still in, so let me.
You only get one, Sarah. And we'll be back. Okay, now Barun's in, but he's not in yet. So we need Sandy. Gosh, I don't want to go past it.
No.
Not when he was there. Sandy, call back.
Yeah, he came in a couple of times.
Have Barun's here.
Are we running about 10 minutes behind?
We're not. We would be starting with Barun normally right now. But so we're staying with the same question. And we'll ask Sandy, and I have to ask him one beforehand so that we're sure that we're voting for what we're voting for. I don't know if you were here, Mark, when we went through it, but we can't, we have to do a verbal vote at the end because there are 11 people. If we'd had 10, we would have made it. The at-large is not or is larger than the tech by about three or four. Forget, you can be at-large and tech. Oh, great, Sandy, you're here. All right, we'll unmute you and we'll be asking you four questions, but I have to ask you one first. Once you get on, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. How are you?
Okay, Sandy, we were not sure from your application, are you working in technology now?
Yes, I am. Currently working with Ernst &amp; Young.
Okay.
Helping them build a consulting team.
Okay, very good. We just had to make sure because there's really two categories, at-large and tech, and you, we'll put you in the tech also. You could be either one. Okay, I, we will ask four questions. I'll start it off. The question is, do you have any experience with planning or implementing smart city principles?
Honestly, no. I haven't worked directly on that. Though I have helped consult on an RFP for a city in India where they were trying to convert a city into a smart city. And what that entail was looking into various aspects of traffic management, communications, helping with the seniors, with the living conditions, waste management, things like that, and also utilizing the natural resources for generating electricity or power. So I consulted with a company on that, helped them come up with a proposal for that, and they actually did implement it within the process of completing the book.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. That's a yes, not a no. I'm looking at this, you got like five lines of it. Okay, next question will be from Councilmember Afar.
Hi, Sandy. Thank you so much for interviewing. Good. So my question was, if you can share with me a specific example of a time when you volunteered for something, what were your challenges? How did you overcome them? And what did success look like?
Great question. So I, I support a small group called us GitPro. We have organized a few sessions in San Ramon as well. It's like a global Indian technology professionals, a group of folks we bring together. There are six or seven chapters, three in the Bay area, if you count Sacramento as well in that. And we meet quite often. In fact, our next meetup is on the 10th where we are bringing a financial advisor to come and talk about some of the things that people could do after COVID and how do you plan for your retirement. The challenge I face is getting, convincing people to join those, these forums. It's always difficult when you say this is a free event, we're not charging you any money, but it's a very good topic for you. And most people think that anything free may not be worth it. So that's, that's one big challenge that I face.
How do you overcome that? I think there are three parts to the, yeah.
Go ahead.
I missed that. Thank you for reminding me. I always feel that if I can reach people directly within my network instead of just emailing them, if I can pick up the phone and talk to a few people, I think that always helps. And that word of mouth is much better handled than just sending emails. So I think that definitely gets me the right sort of people.
Okay, and part three, what would success be? Would it be 10 people attending? Would it be two people attending?
You know, one of the biggest thing of volunteering that I look at is, one, it actually helps me de-stress in the sense that it makes me feel that I'm actually doing something valuable for the community. And at the same time, the folks I'm trying to help, they, they feel benefited by that. So for me, a combination of that is the right success factor. And I think if I could achieve that, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We kicked you back to four now. Councilmember Baroche, so Councilmember Armstrong, your question.
Thank you. Hi, Sandy. My question is, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in the innovation and technology space?
So I've been in the city, or I've been living in the city for close to 21 years. It's been a while and I've seen the city grow almost bursting at its seams. It's not as populous as Dublin is, and I hope it never reaches that level, but what I've seen is that there is, I mean, while the growth is good, we see a influx of people or inflow of people. At the same time, I also feel that it also has brought some shortfalls out. We need a good transport system within the city. That has been our shortcoming, and I think it would be good to have something on that, especially for the seniors. I live with, I mean, I have a 90-year-old lady who lives with me, my mother. So helping her move around, it's entirely on me. I'm happy to do that, but I wish there was something where she could mix with people of her own age, something like that. I also wish there was a better source of communication within the residents of the city. It would have been nice to get informed about what are the things that the councils are doing, what's going on with the different committees that we're working on. Not everybody is as conversant with the website, so a lot of people don't reach that. And you have to dig around to find like what's happening over there. So I think that, those are the two main things. Also, how do I make tech, people more easily aware of the tech feasibility, like what can we do for them using technology? There is a lot we could do with waste management, communications, solar powered utilization, things like that. I think that would be very nice.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Baroche.
Hi, Sandy. So my question, pretty much like piggyback for Mark's question, like, so you mentioned multiple technologies that, areas that technology can enhance. But which one you think the most needed or an addition that can help to improve the services to our residents?
I don't think I've seen a senior living facility within San Ramon yet. I think there was a proposal to make one. I haven't seen it come to fruition yet, or if it does, maybe I'm missing something. I have been recently working with a company or, or I was looking into a company which was trying to implement automation for senior living. And it basically helps people who are living in these facilities and also at home. These are devices which can be set up in the form of switches. It's called, it's called as a Z-Wave technology and it allows people to sense movement within the house. It also makes sure that if there's a senior, they are moving around. Have they taken their medicines? If not, if something is not right, somebody is informed that hey, something is wrong over here. So what we have seen in during this COVID times that some of the most impacted communities were the senior living facilities around. And having something like this in households which have senior members could be of great value for the next time. I hope it doesn't happen, but it's always better to be prepared. So something like this, I would definitely give it a very high importance. Make sure that we are prepared for it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. We will be voting on this in a couple of hours. We're going through 11 people. But thank you very much for applying. I'm sorry we couldn't get you in right away. We're a little bit behind. But we look forward to your presentation. We did look forward to your presentation. I just had to leave you with one last thought before you leave. I'm sorry to inform you that we will be bigger than Dublin because we are bigger than Dublin. But outside of that, thank you very much for your thoughts and we will let you know, follow up, I believe, the city clerk probably with a something tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I really enjoyed this. Thank you, everyone.
No, thank you for coming. Okay, our next speaker, we're gonna keep this rolling so we can get you answered tonight. Barun? Are you there and ready to jump in? We'll bring him in. Okay. We'll unmute Barun. Are you there? You're muted, Barun. Hey, no. Barun, can you hear me? You're muted. There you go. Okay, you're ready. All right, we're gonna ask you four questions tonight. We're, we're, we're on a pretty strict timeframe that we're already behind on and we will keep it to 10 minutes. I will ask the first one and at the end, there, there isn't gonna be an opening statement or a closing statement like we did during the elections, but let me just hit you right out of the gate. The first question is, do you have any experience with planning or implementing smart city principles?
As far as smart city principles or planning or implementing, to be honest, I don't. But having a, being a public servant, I do have experience in implementing technology initiatives at my work, which is also in the public space, which are large technology initiatives that are related to sometimes enhancements, sometimes bringing in new something completely new. So I have, I'm in the project and product, project and portfolio management space. So and also have worked in various other niche within the IT space. So I have had the opportunity to work from the process of, you know, ideation phase and taking it all the way to implementation and rollout. So I do have that experience in public and private sector, but not from, to be honest, from a city space.
Thank you. Before we go on to Councilmembers Afar, the last candidate said the same thing, no, but, and I swear I'm looking right, the reason I asked this question is every one of you had something about smart city of the next time, say yes and go from there. Okay, Councilmember Afar, you have a three-part question for.
Yes, hi, Barun. Nice to see you. So my question is about a specific example you can share with me where you volunteered. What were the challenges? What was the outcome? And what did success look like? And it could be volunteer or unpaid anywhere.
So just to give you a brief background about where I actually work, so I told, like I mentioned in my previous example, I work in a, in the public sector. So I actually am an employee at the Federal Reserve Bank of San Francisco. And as part of our organization, we have a lot of employee resource groups. What those are could be interest-based resource groups or ethnic-based resource groups like the, and, and as employees, we either help run those resource groups or lead those resource groups, or we contribute by being team members of those. And they organize various activities and events throughout the year. Now, this is totally a volunteer effort by the employees and I'm part of a few of them already. The biggest challenge that I have is, is leading a resource group like that is to manage a volunteer army because everybody has their day jobs, everybody has their assigned roles. But this is something in addition to that. So to have a group of individuals to kind of commit their time to produce something tangible, especially like an event that is going to be looked at by a lot of audience is something that is very, very challenging, especially because you know, everybody is volunteering. They're not reporting to you. You just have to collaborate together and move things forward. And the, and, and the way to, the way I approach this is to basically create accountability by bringing everybody together and to then frequently checking on, on how things are progressing forward. Success in this case looks like is usually some kind of an event that the group is actually doing that is going to be either interorganizationaly or just within the organization and coming, bringing resources together to make sure that those events take place and are successful. For example, we have these every month, depending on which we are celebrating, we have Asian Pacific Islander Month and part of that. So if we have an event, the success would be that whatever event we are conducting or whatever outreach that we have to do, whatever speakers that we need to get in to give talks and stuff, that those go properly, the registrations and all that. So that's what success looks like in those volunteer efforts.
Thank you.
Oh, I missed the third part. Okay, Councilmember Armstrong.
Hi, Barun. My question is, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in this? My question is, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in this innovation and technology space?
I would, I would give, think of it not just as one particular need, but the way I would look at it as this, this, this can be like broken down into like few items. So number one is that I don't believe that our city has a product technology roadmap, so to speak, you know, for not just what's being implemented currently, and I might be wrong on that if they do, you know, totally take it back. But for not just a technology that's current, but also for the future years, you know, what, what is going to be implemented and when and what's in the pipeline? And, you know, to make that public, I will also look at, you know, the contracting aspect, which falls under the mandate of this committee is, you know, how, what kind of, what does supply diversity look in terms of the contracts that the city issues for, for example, for minority and women-owned businesses or veteran-owned businesses? And also looking at, you know, what's, what's working in, in the cities that are around us? And, and see if that has a use case within our city. And last but not the least, I think this is also a missed opportunity for us is that, you know, we, we can work with councils like the teen council and, and others to groups to see how we can create programs to tap into the talent of our younger population and increase, you know, programs in the areas of entrepreneurship and innovation. So those are some of the things that I feel can, can be the areas that, you know, to answer your question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barros.
Hi, Varun.
Hi.
Which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology to provide better services to our residents?
Can you, can you say that again?
Yeah, sure. Which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology to provide better services to our residents? Just can you give like one of, one you think that is the most needed?
So I would, I, two, two things come to mind. One, I would think is in the area of communication about, you know, Wi-Fi enablement within the city, that kind of takes, takes us in the direction of building a smart city. And also the second thing that was coming to mind was traffic, in, in the area of traffic improvement. I know there was, there's, there's work happening to make our city grid with, you know, connect fiber connectivity within the traffic city grid. So, so that there's better traffic management and things like that. Those are the two areas that I could, you know, think in, you know, at the high level where communication and traffic, traffic improvements with, you know, increasing the fiber grid within the city.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me. We're going to make a decision later tonight. I think you're the, you're the third out of eleven that we're going to interview. So sometime tonight we'll be taking a vote and we will let you know through our city clerk on how that vote turned out. So thanks again for applying and we wish you well. We are going to move on to our next candidate, which I believe is De Walker. Did I pronounce that right? Christina, is he here?
He will be logging in shortly.
Okay. We're still keeping it moving pretty good. Victor Walker and then Monica. Whenever he gets here, bring him in. We got two attendees wanted. Okay, Monica will be here. Caller, use in. Not yet. We don't have De Walker yet, right?
No, and he has, he should be logging in any moment.
Okay. Monica, if you're listening, we're running about ten minutes behind.
Here he is.
Okay. Okay, De Walker, can you unmute? We're going to ask you four questions. You don't even have to give us an opening statement or a closing statement. We're going to, we're going to keep things moving and I will start off with me. My question is, you think I haven't memorized by now, do you have any experience with planning or implementing smart city principles?
Yes, I have, I have experience in my role, like two years ago or three years ago, I was part of, I worked for GE Digital. And as part of that, we helped implement for City of San Diego, the smart city concept, as well as supply them with software, design the software. And, and then we helped them identify a vendor where they were working on the, you know, smart traffic signals, crime detection and parking meters and so on and so forth. Yeah, so I'm pretty well aware of that.
Thank you. Councilmembers of our.
Thank you. Hi, De Walker. So the question I have is, can you share me a specific example where you volunteered? What were some of the challenges? What was the outcome and what did success look like for you?
Yeah, so I do a lot of volunteer activities specifically around, you know, adopt a child as well as educate a child, focusing on mostly kids, helping them. So one of my objective is to use my knowledge and help educate the kids. So I'm an active participant in Junior Achievement, one of the programs that, that GE also helps promote. And, and I was able to participate in going to a school, underprivileged, teach the underprivileged kids, specifically in, in some areas where they needed help. And my objective was, of course, to kind of help them. It was just a one-day session, but my objective was, how can I influence, can I, you know, can I help them identify their own role models and can I be a role model for some of them as well? So, so that they, they have the constant connection with me and with my peers who we help. And hopefully find, you know, they are able to find what they, you know, what they want to do in their life and in their careers.
So what was the challenge there?
The challenge was, it is mostly, you know, they, they have been struggling to, to focus on, on studies. They don't think that they were underprivileged and they didn't have all the infrastructure necessary. And so they thought that education was not important for them and they were, there were a lot of school dropouts as well. So for, for, for us was to create that sense of like, hey, it's important, you know, education is important. And, and what is the outcome and how, you know, where would you, what would you do if you get educated, if you get a college degree and so on and so forth? So it was, it was just sharing, sharing our perspective and then kind of helping them uplift a little bit.
And what was success for you? What did you think was, you know, being part?
Yeah, so success, I mean, typically I don't want to solve world hunger, right? I mean, the success would be if I go and say, if I'm able to help one child, right, one child, it's, it's good enough for me. So at least, you know, in, in this instance, I have established relationship and created that, that, that I was able to influence like two kids and help them, coach them to towards, they were, they were in middle school and then help them guide through high school, less, less college, community college. So that was, that was good for me.
Thank you.
Member Armstrong.
Thank you. My question is, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in this innovation and technology space?
One of the things that I'm very passionate about and I will be driving is citywide Wi-Fi, maybe even not citywide Wi-Fi. Again, not trying to boil the ocean, is, is there is a pocket of areas that we can have Wi-Fi connectivity? As, as people are working mostly from home and they are, you know, trying to stay local, they are trying to explore the city, the San Ramon city. They heard, they're finding new parks that they have never seen. They're probably driving past those parks. And they want to take their kids and myself, I was, although my, I work in the city, I was, I never explored all the parks. So I think having a citywide Wi-Fi connectivity would help a lot. The second is it will also help the kids who are working from home and they're not able to use the broadband or the bandwidth that they have in the house, because you know, you have four or five people working at the same time. So how do we help, you know, provide that kind of service? And of course, while I'm driving outside or while I'm shopping outside, provide that same facility.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Barros.
Hi, De Walker.
Hey, Sridhar.
Which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology to provide better services to our residents?
I, I would, I would say more of, you know, the, the websites, it's push notification. A lot of activities happen in the city and of course, last year was crazy, you know, nothing much was happening. A lot of these activities were happening, but you know, either you have to log on to some place or, you know, word of mouth. Like, hey, this event is happening or these services are available. Is there an application that we can send push notifications about everything that's happening in the city, just making, you know, the citizens aware, aware of the things that are happening around in, in the city? The good, the, the, the good things, the, the events that are coming up or how to, even how to, right? A lot of folks are not even aware of that. So a mobile application that provides the same information that you could go in and maybe more tailored towards simple users and make it very mobile friendly. I think that, that will help. And of course, it spans across multiple divisions and areas. But I, I feel that that's, that would be super helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, De Walker. We are going to determine or make a vote tonight, probably in another hour or so. I appreciate your showing up for us tonight and giving us your thoughts and thank you very much. You don't have to do a closing statement. And we're going to move right ahead to the next one. And again, you will find out how this vote turned out probably tomorrow from our city clerk.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Okay, Monica. Monica, are you there? I see her hand is raised. She's moving right in. Once you get your unmuted Monica, we'll start with the first question. And again, thank you for applying. There you go. Can you hear us, Monica?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to ask four questions. You don't have to do an open statement or a closing statement. We're trying to keep this to ten minutes. We're already ten behind. My first question will be, do you have any experience with planning or implementing smart city principles?
No, I don't. I have worked in IT and I have a lot of experience with technology, but not specifically with city projects because my experience has been in the private sector.
Okay. I would, I usually take a second look at this because everybody said no and they got smart cities on virtually every app except yours. But thank you very much. Our next question comes from councilmembers afar.
Hi, Monica. Nice to see you. So my question is, can you share with me a specific example where you volunteered for something? What were the challenges? What was the outcome and what did success look like, like for you? So I started volunteering in my, my child's high school in the Ed Fund. They also call it academic boosters. I started off as the communications lead and I'm currently the vice president of the Ed Fund. When I started off, you know, the, I think what some of the biggest challenges we had were the Ed Fund collects a lot of, I think it's the biggest fundraising organization within the high school. So it does collect a significant amount of funds. I think one of the biggest challenges we faced as a group is how do you select the right funding opportunities? Right? Where do you channel that money and how do you make sure that it makes the broadest impact to all the kids across the schools? So we had a lot of, you know, debate within our group as to, well, should we be funding this group? Should we be funding these clubs? Should we be, you know, what should we be funding? So I think that to me was kind of the challenge as well as scholarships for seniors, you know, the funding of the scholarship, what the amount should be, how many scholarships we should be funding. So I found that challenging because it's, you know, it's, it's not black and white, right? It's always, there's always benefit in doing something, but is there more benefit in doing this other activity or funding this other activity? But at the end of the day, the way I look at it is if we have made a difference, even if it's to a smaller population of the kids, if we are making a difference, we are making a difference and we are channeling that money in the right direction. So that's the way I look at success. I hope that answered all your questions. That did. Thank you so much. You're mute.
I'm sorry. I kept thinking there was a part two and a part three. So maybe you're quick for me. Okay, council.
I think Monica just encompassed that. Some people did not.
Whatever it takes. Go ahead.
Hi, hi, Monica. My question is, is what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in this innovation and technology space?
I think one thing that would benefit the city tremendously is to have a two-way communication with its citizens. So I think a lot of the communication is one-way going out from the city to its residents. But I don't see a lot of the reverse happening, or even if it is happening, it's not very convenient, right? If we have an app, it's, for example, if a residency is a pothole or they see an issue, I've heard there is an app, but I don't, I think there can be improvements made with the app to make it more user-friendly and have more of the two-way communication happening back to the city. So that's one area which I think could help a lot.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember.
Go ahead. You, you need to finish that thought or?
Sorry, I just want to elaborate a little bit more on that. You know, I was a member of this committee last year, so I heard a lot of the presentations. And I do see that there are areas where the city could benefit from sharing of information between the departments. But that's something that still has to be figured out how that can be done with the privacy issues that are, you know, upfront.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Barros.
Hi, Monica.
Hi.
Which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology to provide better services to our residents?
Well, I should have reserved my last answer for this question. So, you know, in addition to the app, which I think if there is a city app, we need to make it more, more publicize it a lot more and make it a lot more user-friendly because I think, again, the communication with the residents in my mind should be a two-way, not just a one-way, you know, out pushed to the residents. In addition to that, you know, this is not a technology-related thing that I can think about, but the Einhaus Trail. I think that's something which really needs some improvement on. And, you know, again, not related to technology, but we could take a technology angle to that and ask citizens for their feedback, like if there are sections of the trail that need fixing, right? For our residents to take pictures of it and send it back to the city and provide that input.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I think somebody did that. Thank you, Monica. We are only going to ask for an opening and closing statement sometime tonight. Probably in the next hour, we'll be making a decision and we will make sure that, or the city clerk will make sure that you are informed on what the decision is. And again, thank you for applying.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Our next, our next candidate is Stan Sinitsa. Is Stan in? Let's get. No Stan yet, huh?
I have not seen him login either.
Okay. Okay, then.
Let me go ahead. Let me try calling him. Hold on one moment.
Okay. I'm looking to see. Sarah wants to go again. Pardon?
While she's calling, you were mentioning before about selecting at-large or regular members. What were you saying about that?
Well, Mike, there are three positions open on this committee, one of which is alternate. Two have to be.
I think there are four positions.
There are four, but I mean, I'm staying with just the first thing that we're going to look at is work in the industry. So there are two people for that and one alternate. Then there will be an at-large, and you actually could take four from people that work in the industry. But that'll be after we work on these three and we take the three, we take them out, and then the decision is at-large. I've been toying with what we do because we can't, it isn't done the normal way. So it's like after we've talked about or listened to everyone. We're going to have to discuss it ourselves or tell us what your votes are. I will be the, I'll be the guinea pig if you want me to go first. Then we'll see who wants to jump up and volunteer for for second speaker or who they would vote for. Christina will be taking down notes on who it is. My thinking is we don't pick an alternate, we just pick three to begin with. And then let people discuss if we can come to what we think would be three. Probably what will happen is we'll get into it a little bit, we'll come to three, four, five or six. And we'll say, well, we could do this and do this with at-large. Unless you want to reverse that and pick the at-large first, but we've got to start somewhere. And the problem is, this is different because of 11 people. If we'd had 10, we probably could have done something similar. It's a lot easier, Mark, I'll tell you that when you're face to face. But, you know, it's anyway, what's the verdict?
I was not able to get a hold of Stan. I tried calling both both numbers he provided and I was not able to get through.
All right, well, we don't have anyone who's next. So let's, we'll see how soon Patrick gets on.
I think I'll give, I'll give Patrick a call so he can log in a couple of minutes early.
Sure, whenever he's ready. Actually, probably be on time.
So Dave, you think like, if let's say, as you said, if we start with at-large, right? So you want to give us like each of us name, then who are got most names?
Yeah, it's gonna, unfortunately, you're gonna have to do it publicly, Sridhar. My thinking is you have to do three that are in the industry, working in the industry. Yeah, and one of the ones that was on the list that we had to ask that is in the industry, we didn't have them in there, is Sandeep. So you could pick all four from workers in the industry. But you can't pick four at large. You could only pick one if they're not in the industry. So I was thinking, if we just pick three people and we could get to where there were three people, which I don't think it's gonna be that easy either. Then we could pick one from among them that is at-large, I'm sorry, is, yeah, alternate, not at-large. And then go to, okay, do we have a fourth person? That puts all 11 in. There's only eight that are in the industry. Is that correct? Do you know if, remember?
Christina, do, have you sent those out, those buckets of those in the industry and those not in the industry, the spreadsheet you were showing us or?
I can.
Okay.
I'll do it right now.
That might, yeah.
Or you could put it up at the end and we'll do it that way.
Yeah, or you can do that.
Patrick is in right now, so let me.
Patrick, where are you? Jump him in right now. As soon as you unmute, we'll start. Okay, can you hear me, Patrick? Good. This is gonna be just so simple. You don't have to do an opening and you don't have to do a closing. We're just going to ask you four questions and move right on. Thank you for coming in early. Actually, you're on time, but we, one person that we haven't been able to get a hold of. So the first question is, you know how it goes when you talk instead of look up what you're supposed to be looking at? Do you have any experience with planning or implementing smart city principles?
Smart city principles? Well. As I, I think I mentioned to all of you during my interview for the city council appointment. I have been involved in implementing various forms of technology in my career as a prosecutor. I use technology quite a bit. I also train on it for law enforcement. And what I have, what my area sort of, my unique perspective or area of expertise is using technology. To solve crimes, to prevent crimes. And so I'm familiar with this particular committee and its its advisory in the use of technology for city. I understand that the, that the city is interested in using technology to improve quality of life for the citizens of San Ramon. I know that the city has recently implemented surveillance cameras at various locations in the city. I believe that certainly my perspective will help in making sure that we use them efficiently. We use them legally so that we can certainly keep San Ramon's low crime rate low. And I also under ten other priorities for this committee in terms of cybersecurity for the city. City government as well as for our first responders in our hospital. And I do have some familiarity with that in terms of the use of of how technology is used for wiretapping. And how we have to make sure that we have very robust cybersecurity and making sure that that are the technology that we use for for crime prevention. And crime solving crimes is not in any way compromised.
Thank you. Council members afar.
Thank you. Hi, Patrick. Good to see you. Okay, so my question is, can you share with me and a specific example of a time when you volunteered? What were some of the challenges? How did you overcome those challenges and what did success look like?
So i- in terms of volunteering. I'm also personally, I, I, I volunteer. I'm, I'm involved in the Central Committee for Democrats here in Contra Costa County. I've also volunteered in in other capacities as a, as a soccer coach for more than a decade here in in San Ramon. My wife and I, we try to stay involved in our schools. We've both been involved in local PTA. Some of the challenges, I, you know, that I can draw upon off the top of my head are just some of the professional challenges in volunteering for certain projects. And making sure that when, for example. Recently, I was involved in a working group to improve and rewrite the human trafficking protocols in Santa and Santa Clara County. The last update for that protocol was back in 2016. And what I've attempted to do in the last two years that I've been assigned as to leave prosecutor for human trafficking. And is to bring my unique perspective in going after organized crime to help solve specifically human trafficking related offenses. And so in, in revising that protocol, we've had to sort of rewrite the script for how we investigate these cases. And that involves using a robust form of new technology to solve these crimes. Using GPS tracker data, using CDRs or or call detail records to use. Tell the time or in. Information to help us understand time. Mine was more.
Patrick, you're breaking off.
And are sometimes sceptic to their. Hello, you there?
Yeah, you're breaking off. So if if it would help to turn off your video and speak, that that sometimes helps with bandwidth.
Sure, I can also move to another room in my house, but usually get a pretty good. Wifi here where I'm at. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. So, so in terms of the challenges, just in short. It's about understanding the problem and it's about trying to find creative solutions. And that's what I've been doing over the last two years and rewriting the script of how we would. These types of investigations and rewriting a protocol for investigators for how to, to how to effectively do that. And over the last, we've improved the number of investigations and the number of people we held accountable by 800%. So we were doing less than, less than 10 human trafficking cases back in 2018. And last, we did more than 80. We've held more than 80 individuals responsible for, but a team of people who have come together, we work collaboratively. To better understand these cases and and effectively investigate them.
Thank you. I think I got most of it. That means, we need to, yeah, but you, that means we have an issue with broadband.
All right, I'm gonna move. I'm gonna see if maybe moving to a different room might help us.
Oh, actually, like, if you turn off the video, that can help.
You can try. Okay, council member Armstrong.
Hi, Patrick. Hey, Patrick, my question. Hey, doing fine, doing fine. What do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in the innovation and technology space?
Just give me one second. I'm going to make sure that that I don't get disturbed as I move into another room where I might get better reception. Like I said, I don't usually have these kind of issues at night, but my wife's teaching tonight too.
I can repeat the question if you'd like.
Please, that would be great.
Sure. What do, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in the innovation and technology space?
You know, again. The, my background for more than 22 years is a prosecutor and public safety is certainly my area of expertise in wheelhouse. And so I I will bring that unique perspective to the committee. And focus on how we can use technology to improve public safety and the quality of life for the people of San Ramon. And looking at certain priorities in terms of public safety, it's how we can use technology to in, in solving crimes and crime prevention. And as I mentioned, I know that cameras have been installed throughout the city, which I think helps. Helps our police agencies sort of understand what's happening day to day. We could also use license plate readers that will also help understand the type, you know, who's in our city and 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 how crimes are occurring. I can tell you that last year in front of my house, my daughter's catalytic converter was stolen off of her car, not once, but twice in a six-month period of time. And so having license plate readers, having cameras, having a system in place where individuals, and I know this exists. That homes that have surveillance cameras can provide that information to our police agencies. I think will be incredibly effective for us, understanding people who come into our city and and prey upon our residents and and try to exploit our cities. Some of the other priorities that that I have read about in preparation for this interview is, is certainly. The idea of having sort of a citywide wifi. And I think that this pandemic, what it has taught us is that there are inequities in technology where some people may not be able to afford to have wifi. And while the school districts have stepped up and helped to sort of bridge that gap, once this pandemic is over, that, that gap is going to continue to exist. And where the city can maybe come in and help bridge that gap, maybe if it's not citywide wifi. But some type of assistance for individuals who are low income and may not be able to afford wifi, I think would be, would be helpful. Also, communication through technology is is obviously important. And there's a vast array of of different media that we can use to help, again, get out the message of what is happening here in San Ramon. And technology can be used in that regard. So there's a whole host of priorities and and ways in which this committee, I think, can be effective in using innovation and technology.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Council member Verus.
Hi, Patrick.
Hi, council member.
Hi, you give a pretty good list for previous questions. So this one is like, my question is, which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology? To provide better better service to our residents?
Well, again, I believe that the city service that I believe I can provide the best contribution to help enhance would be public safety again. And and certainly, we can always use more technology to help us protect and serve this community that we that we care about and that we live in. Through the use of providing our law enforcement officers with the latest forms of technology to help them. GPS trackers, surveillance cameras, surveillance equipment, access to applications that help them enhance their work. For example, there is a, an application known as Cellhawk where law enforcement officers can use call detail records from cell phones. That will help them geolocate potential suspects of crimes and help track victims and locate victims. And so that's, that's one of the sort of the unique perspectives that I would bring in terms of providing insight that would help us keep our communities safer.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. We will make a decision tonight and you will likely be informed tomorrow by our city clerk. And we thank you again for applying. And we're going to keep this ball moving so that you do find out tonight, if possible, who is going to be the four persons on this committee. So our next person is James.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Whoo, James is here, okay. Okay, can you hear me, James?
I can hear you just fine.
Very good. Okay, we're, we're, we're gonna give you a break tonight. No opening statement, no closing statement. You don't have to tell us what your favorite color is. So we're gonna ask you four questions. Keep the ball moving and sometime tonight, we are going to decide on who are going to be the four people on ITAC. So my question is, do you have any experience with planning or implementing smart city principles?
None.
You know, thank you. I love the brevity. But I'm gonna take another look in here because the, everybody started out with none and there were smart cities on every one of their applications. But I appreciate that. Our next question will be, council members afar.
Thank you. And that'll give you more time for my question. So my question is around community engagement. And can you give me a specific example of a community, you know, something in the community that you've done or volunteered? With a project where, what were the challenges? What was the outcome and what did success look like in your involvement?
Yeah. So for the past several years, we've been living in Fremont, moved here to San Ramon about a year ago. My children coming into their high school and middle school years here, still participate with a group in Fremont. It's called the Fremont Freewheelers Bicycle Club. We're a club of about 500 people that do a lot of road cycling around the Bay Area. We do quite a lot of it and that includes a three-county-wide century ride. So we actually run a century ride with about 1,200 people across from Fremont all the way through Pleasanton into Livermore. Around through Dublin, up the grade and and through the canyons a little bit here. My involvement in that is, I'm on our board for that century ride every year. So all the planning decisions that go into that, and in particular, I run all the communications on that. So that's all of our email marketing controls, ensuring we have all the communication out there, working with our website designer and getting the right information out. You can imagine with COVID has created quite an interesting change. Our rides usually in April every year. It's called the primavera, so it's spring, usually mid-April. And so managing all the communications during that time period, including Twitter and Facebook feeds through that. Keeping people informed has been really the large challenge of that. And through all this, we've learned, you know, that the balance of people who, the feelings, right? You know, we've all, all changed what we do. And you have feelings of like, well, who really wants a refund? Oh, you have my $100 for the ride that you guys do. And by the way, it's a nonprofit volunteer organizations. So all of our money gets donated then to groups around the Bay Area. A lot of cycling related, including the East Bay Cycling Organization, Eback, yeah. Sure, I don't remember exactly the acronym on it. So that, you know, a lot of my community involvement's been with the Fremont Freewheelers. And that includes engaging around the Bay Area and some of the city and county organizations. When they're soliciting feedback from stakeholders like cyclists and asking about, hey, when they're soliciting feedback from stakeholders like cyclists and asking about, hey, we want to do better with our bike lanes. More recently, my son came home, as an example of engaging with San Ramon and our services here, he came home pretty beaten up. His bike was a little bit damaged. I was like, what the heck happened? He got to enjoy about a two-inch lift in the concrete pads over by Bishop Ranch in the Iron Horse Trail. And they spray paint yellow on those edges at times. But they also have these fancy grinding machines, which I nicely suggested that they do. And that got attention after I almost busted my bike up. And you can imagine, I ride a, you know, ride a road bike. It can be expensive. I almost busted mine up hitting the same ledge. My son coming home actually hurt because he fell a couple of weeks later, hitting that same ledge in the walkway. Everybody enjoys. Got an interesting reaction for me, and I thought, it's gotta be a service out there, you know, something out there. And found the website, was able to email and communicate with one of the engineers, and they were, they addressed it just a couple of days later. Getting paint out there. And then a couple of weeks later, they got the grinding out there and flattened it out.
Awesome. Thank you so much for sharing that.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Hi, James. My question is, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in this innovation and technology space?
Sure, sure. A lot of it's my more recent, more recent career direction is working in the information security space. So I do senior technical program manager for a big software company. It's all cloud, cloud-focused software. That's a fancy way of saying I work across the technology for security, cybersecurity in our company. And I think that's really what drew me into this, more that shift in the last year into cybersecurity and recognizing that there are cities, hospitals, counties, states that are really the biggest thing I see coming across my desk almost every day right now is ransomware. But among other things, that, you know, I haven't been in this role. I don't know exactly what the city's needs are. So I'm not gonna pretend to push my agenda to say San Ramon needs this. And I've seen this big problem as a as a consumer of San Ramon services. On the flip side of that, I recognize that this is an evolving area that's probably not. You probably don't have a lot of, a lot of people inherently involved in cybersecurity and aware of all the, all the things going on. And so bringing that insight from somebody who's participating in that industry every day, that's their job already, to the city of San Ramon and then helping, you know, bring that to the forefront. Anything that might come up to say, hey, there is a needed investment here or something might come up like, hey, we've identified we might have a problem here. James, can you go check into this and work with the group to understand, is this something we need to pay more attention to? Those are all important. I think cities, small and large, have to pay attention to that. It's just a matter of funding of who who pays attention to it the most.
Okay, thank you, James.
Councilmember Berus.
Hey, James. As you are talking about that cybersecurity, one thing I always, whenever I log in into our city site or get into city site, it will show me like not secure. Every time I keep thinking of reminding to our city manager to get that fixed, so SSF certificate need to be fixed, so.
They just need to update their SSL key.
Okay, so my question is, which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology to provide better services to our residents?
Yeah. You know, just a year in the city, I worked nearby for seven years at Ross Stores in Dublin, so not new to the area per se. I I don't have a lot of exposure to say like, this technology really needs to be improved. I actually have been, you know, pleasantly surprised as I got through some of the website even for the city of San Ramon and just seeing what kind of information was available there, that there were kind of the right touch points of what I felt was useful to me. So I don't have an immediate response. I wish I could say, you know, highlight one particular thing and say, hey, that would be really, really key there. But I really don't. I, you know, I don't want to pretend that I I do or come up with something off the top of my head to say that otherwise. So in a, in a sense, in my first foray and, you know, into this, into something like this advisory panel, taking a very much a learning approach and come in to see, you know, absorb the information and then help determine what what those areas are that are in need.
Thank you.
Thank you, James, for participating tonight. We will let you know what happens probably by tomorrow. We're going to make a decision on who are the four people that will go onto this committee tonight. And we're gonna keep the ball rolling. You don't have to do a closing statement. Once again, thanks for, thanks for being very concise on my question.
Thank you, Mayor Hudson. Thank you all.
Thank you again. All right, our next participant is Patrick Coleman. Oh, Patrick's coming in. Hey, Patrick, can you hear me? All right, he's ready to go.
Yes.
Ask you four questions. You don't have to do an opening or a closing. This is gonna be easy tonight. Get off. The first question is, don't ever lose the page. Do you have any experience with planning or implementing smart city principles?
No, smart city principles.
I love it. You're the second one to do that. Okay, Councilmember Zafar, you have a question for Patrick.
Hey, Patrick, nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
So, so my question is around volunteering. And have you volunteered, actually, can you give me a specific example of some, you know, a volunteer activity or something where you volunteered? What were some of the challenges? What, how did you overcome them and what did success look like?
I would say the bulk of, so I have, just just for context, I have three kids. They're all in high school at this point. Actually, my oldest is now starting college, but feels like she's still at home. So the bulk of my kind of volunteering so far has been through kind of sports activities. So I've coached, you know, young soccer teams. More recently, been involved in, all the kids are cross-country runners. So we've been very active in kind of helping the high school teams, mostly the girls at San Juan Valley High. Even though we live in San Ramon, they ended up going to San Juan Valley High. So I wouldn't say they were necessarily formal roles. But, you know, like, we, you know, my, my, my wife and I, you know, would run the end-of-year banquet, right? And, you know, so you had to deal with budgets and expenses and coordination with lots of parents and all the different ways that they communicate and provide information and putting the slideshow together and those kind of things would probably be the most relevant kind of volunteer thing that I've been doing recently. And then, yeah, challenges, yeah, and challenges is, yeah, is just you're dealing with a very dispersed group of people with different, you know, like you're, you're asking for, like getting the pictures for the the video thing, right? Like, you're dealing with some people who are very tech savvy and some people who who have less technical skills. And so trying to find a common solution that that works for everybody, you know, can be challenging. And so, you know, you just kind of trial and error and experiment, and then the last, the edge cases, you just kind of have to muscle through.
Thank you. Yeah.
All three, okay.
And I guess that banquet was the success, right? Once you pull it all together, would you say that is success?
Yeah, I think the success is, yeah, we had a banquet and I, and I think the kids all had a, it was a good experience for all the kids and families.
And when you say run, you're not talking about cross-country, you mean put the event on, right?
I didn't do the running. I do run for my own pleasure, but no, I was, yeah, the kids were doing the running part.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Hi, Patrick. So my question is, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in the innovation and technology space?
You know, I I don't think I'm I'm informed about, in terms of like specific projects you have going on right now. I would say I watched most of the, the only video I could find of this committee's, those post online was from, I think, October of twenty twenty. So I did watch that session where you were talking about your infrastructure for fiber optics, for the traffic signals and city Wi-Fi and a wide range of things. So I don't think I have, I don't have a specific like, oh, Project X, and I have expertise in that. But I think what I have is, I have, you know, twenty-five years of experience in the technology industry, right? And so whatever the project is, you know, I've worked in test and measurement, consumer electronics, telecommunications. So I have a broad range of experiences and projects I've worked on. So, you know, budgets, planning, project management, scoping requirements, feasibility. That's, that's my bread and butter. That's what I get paid to do. And so if you have projects, I mean, I honestly, I don't, I've kind of, this is kind of like, I was curious how the city worked. I don't know if that's the kind of thing you even need or what this role is. But but running technology projects from concept to execution is what my day job is.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Berus.
Hi, Patrick. Which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology to provide better services to our residents?
I can't say that I have an answer for the aggregate of the entire city. I can give you my personal opinion. I think it'd probably be just how to get information and get stuff done with the city. Like I have, like, I'm getting, you know, a bathroom done, and it's still kind of an adventure to figure out. Like, you just end up calling and talking to people, right? So I would say the, the, it's still, it's not a bad website, but it's still, I think, a lot of, there's opportunities to make it easier for for the the kinds of things that people as residents of the city need doing. It can still be a bit of an adventure. So I I think just kind of making it easier for people to to get answers to their daily questions as residents and then and get those resolved is, I think, there's still, seems like there's opportunities there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. We will let you, or we will be deciding probably within the next thirty or forty minutes. And we will let you know tomorrow. The city clerk will inform you of how we turned out with the vote. I thank you for coming tonight. We're gonna move right along. We are just blasting through this. I will let the council know that after the next two interviews, we're gonna take a break, so. Thank you, Patrick. Our next candidate is Oka, is it O'Corey?
She's not in yet, so you have about five minutes before six thirty.
Ooh.
So I can, I can call her to see if she would like to log in a little bit early.
Whatever it takes.
Hold on one moment.
And then we'll take a five-minute break and you can gather your notes and thoughts. And we'll come back and start with the, put up the tech people.
So now that we have ten people, I wonder if Christina, when she comes, if she can just do the online survey thing.
Now, I asked her that one, remember, and it takes a while to set it. The problem is, we don't have the person. They just didn't show up to interview. I still remember the night I hit this soft where we had, I think, ten candidates for eight spots and only two people didn't make it. You may remember who one of them was, Sabita. And one guy didn't show up, and I go, but he showed up late. Now, it, if you, if you've submitted, even if you don't interview, you're still in it.
Okay.
I still can't believe, that's another story. We just got ahead of schedule. These guys saying no to my questioner. I still can't, if you look, there's like eight out of the eleven that have in their smart cities. And it's, you know, you're all in smart cities. I probably asked it wrong, is the real question.
So I just actually, interestingly, a friend of mine, he was, is also the former CTO of the city of Palo Alto. And he just put out a book called Smart Cities for Dummies. I ordered it. I was talking to him when he was writing the book. And, you know, what he said was, smart cities, cities are still all about people. So even when you talk about smart cities, how do you put people in the forefront? So once I get done reading with that, if anybody would like to borrow it, I'd be happy to.
Order up here, it's probably on the shelf anyway. Yeah, we, we had Gary Gallego from San Diego's Council of Governments come down or like the, oh, what would you put it, equivalent of Conta Costa Transportation Authority and talk about what they've done and what they're doing. It's like, anytime you do something, we're doing half the stuff people were talking about tonight. We've got the the lights and people call me up and tell me how bad they are. But, you know, that's what you just tweak it and make it better. And a lot of the transit stuff, we've been doing for a long time. I mean, just keep trying to make it better, but there's no money in transit. I mean, I'm surprised people even deal with it, other than federal money that comes in and you're buying buses and we keep updating them.
Your next candidate is here.
Oh, good. Bring him on. Let's go. Okay. Okay, are you unmuted? There you go. All right, we are going to ask you four questions. Is it Anuka?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna ask you four questions. Don't have to do an opening, don't have to do a closing. We're gonna keep this ball rolling, and I will let you know the speech at the end upfront with one more person to interview. We'll probably take a five-minute break, come back, deliberate, and make a decision tonight on the four seats. And you will be notified more than likely tomorrow by our city clerk. If everything's okay, let's get on to the first question that I'm asking. And once again, lost my few pages. Do you have any experience with planning or implementing smart city principles?
Uh, no, Ben, I'm kind of gone through what smart city means. Is using data and information to evaluate and assess the needs of the city. And these needs could range from cybersecurity to try improvement of traffic congestion. Also, quality improvement and process improvement. So essentially, it's the use of data to assist the council and staff to improve the way being and the life of the community.
Thank you. I, I've been doing this all night. I've got to change the way I ask this question. Because I read, this committee advises on the adoption of implementation of smart city policies. Maybe I should have said policies instead of principles. But I actually used your candidate's statement to come up with a question that I asked. Anyway, Councilmember Zafar, his answer is yes, he does have experience in it. So Councilmember Zafar has a different question for you.
Thank you, Anuka. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So my question is, can you share a specific example where you volunteered? What were some of the challenges? What were, what was, how did you overcome them? And what did success look like in that specific example?
Yeah, I've been involved in volunteering, though that was, I belong to an organization. We do medical missions. I have a medical background, so what we do is we assess health products here, medications, medical equipments like eyeglasses. Then we take them to developing countries, like I've been to West Africa. And we go to communities and we assess the needs and rank the community, you know, depending on what their needs are. And is a very stressful project, but the success is that we try to use the resource we have because in some of those communities, the need is enormous. So we try to prioritize and those that we think need the medical supplies most. We try to ensure that those get attention. And we also prioritize based on the aging population, those that don't have any needs. They don't have any help from any other quarters. So, so that's been one of the projects, volunteering, things that I do ongoing. And is the success because some of the people we attend to, they don't have access to healthcare. Even when healthcare is available, they don't have the funding, the means to get those.
There's a second part, third part?
No, I think that's, I got all the answers. Thank you.
Looking at everything else and not paying attention when I should have. Councilmember Armstrong.
Hi, Anuka.
Hi.
Hey, my question is, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in this innovation and technology space? That can benefit from your experiences in this innovation and technology space?
I think San Ramon is, the city is growing and envisage, especially with developments, there would be probably traffic congestion, in the mayor future. And I think, using resource not to plan and data, that would help in ensuring that, we don't have the traffic. Like, for instance, the, the, what is it called? The, shopping center that's being built, close to the council city, that would create problems in the future. And also with the population growing and people coming into houses being developed. I think that's one of the areas of need, which is trying to have a framework. Where we have stressful traffic and driving situations where, the city wouldn't have problems with traffic. Also, I also think in areas of cybersecurity, even using the data to also understand, what the needs of the city could be based on data being collected on any specific projects. That could also help in planning.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burros.
Hi, Onwuka. Which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology to provide better services to our residents?
Is it, sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. Which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology, to provide better services to our residents? Do you think of a city service that we need to improve?
Honestly, I, I don't know what the answer is. I, but I envisage that, looking at the data, the city may have collected, that would probably, be a, a way to go to assess what the needs are. I would not really know what those needs are. But I, I believe that that's the essence of the Innovation and Technology Committee. If they look at what the data we have that is available, they can be able to assess what the needs could be. And also what solution that could be offered. So I don't really know what those needs are.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Onwuka. We will be making a decision probably in the next twenty, thirty minutes. And the city clerk will send out notice to all of the applicants on how the results turned out. Once again, thank you for applying and hopefully we didn't keep you waiting too long tonight. We're trying to stay right on schedule. So you don't have to do a closing statement. And again, we'll probably know within the next thirty or forty minutes.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Our next and last speaker is Maduri. Is she on? She ready to go?
Not yet.
Okay, good. We're a little ahead. After that, we'll take five. Gather your thoughts and we'll come back and discuss what we think.
And Christina, when you get a chance, please email that bucket list.
Also, I've told everyone, Christina, that even though Stan didn't come to his appointment, he's still on the list. I mean, we had this happen once before. Somebody called in like an hour after his time or walked in the door.
An application is still considered for an open.
Yeah.
And Maduri is here.
Good.
You bring her in?
Okay, soon as we get her unmuted, we will go. There she is. Okay, just want you to know, we save the best for last. You are the last person to be interviewed tonight. So fortunately, we don't have an opening statement you have to do or a closing statement. We just have four questions for you and I will start off with the first one. Do you have?
Thank you.
Do you have any experience with planning or implement, implementing smart city principles?
I do have some experience with smart city while I'm working at, while I'm still working at GE. One of the initiatives GE Lighting and Current Business had was around smart cities. How, how you turn cities into smart cities by using the IoT technology and the cloud technology.
Okay, thank you. Next question is councilmember Zafar.
I'm Maduri. Nice to see you. So my question is around volunteerism. And can you give me a specific example of a time when you volunteered? What were some of the challenges? How did you overcome the challenges? And what did success look like?
Plenty of examples. I'll start with again corporate volunteering. I have led GE Goals Initiative where we bring in middle school and high school girls from underprivileged areas. And we give them experiential learning, experience at GE for two weeks and we expose them to various STEM careers, various roles. A woman can play in the field of STEM. And I have led that initiative at GE, starting with planning along with other volunteers and, and making sure we have funds available. And making sure the goals that we bring in, get the holistic experience and are, it's a safe experience for them as well. Now, outside of my work, I have done volunteering in my personal life. My, my son is a Eagle Scout. So when he was doing scouting, I've done a lot of volunteering. I have also done volunteering to raise funds for various initiatives. Cancer, nonprofits, initiatives around underprivileged women. In fact, I was a board member for a nonprofit called Love Me for a year.
So if you can think of one of those and what were your challenges there? And how did you overcome that challenge and what was success?
Funds is always a challenge for some of these volunteering opportunities. So I think, you know, any contributions you and other volunteers can bring in to raise funds for the nonprofits, to carry on the initiatives that they believe in is, is a challenge. And then there are ways to do that and support that. At scouting events, it's bringing people together and agreeing on a schedule. And timeline is, is a challenge. And for outside of these two that I mentioned, I think fundraising happens to be the top challenge.
Thank you.
You had them all. Okay, councilmember Armstrong.
I'm Maduri. My question is, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has? That can benefit from your experiences in the innovation and technology space?
San Ramon City, it's a beautiful city. I love living here. I have extensive experience in innovation and technology for twenty-six years, working in very large corporates. And I think my personal experience of working in various technologies, and making sure the use of that technology is safe and secure, that's the experience I can bring into San Ramon and to benefit from that. Simple example of scheduling for this meeting, instead of me getting an email asking me for specific times that I'm available, there are online tools where both sides of the parties can do that scheduling without having somebody send you an email. So simple things like that, that can make the operations of the city and everybody else working towards the betterment of the city, better for the future.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burros.
I'm Maduri.
Hi, Susan.
Which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology to provide better services to our residents?
Out of the services that exist in San Ramon, is that the question, Susan?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good question. I think technology can benefit all areas in the city, right? A smart city, we talked about that. There are so many different ways of making the city a smart city. There are so many different ways of sharing the information about what's happening in the city with the residents of the city. There are many ways of sharing what's happening in the city and with the residents of the city in safer ways. And I think use of technology can benefit all those areas, specific to the boards and committees that we have within San Ramon. And the councils that we have. I think technology can basically make headway into all of them, to make things easier for everyone who is working on those committees or for sharing information, for storing information, and utilizing new tools and technologies that exist in today's world and to make life simpler.
Thank you.
You're good. Thank you, Maduri. Very good answers. We will be making a decision probably in the next ten, fifteen minutes. We're gonna take a five minute break and then come back and discuss all of the great candidates. We're gonna spare you having to do a closing statement, which we normally do. But again, thank you for applying and we will let everyone know tomorrow, our city clerk, well, we're not gonna do it. But we'll let everyone know what the results are. And again, thank you very much for applying.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time and look forward to connecting with you more.
Thank you. We're gonna take five, Christina, and then we'll be back and discuss this, if that's okay.
And I sent the, I sent the list of ballots to your email.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, I see Stan.
Yeah, I knew it. I knew it. Let's hear him. Wait till Sri Dar comes back. This, it just, I still remember that night and I kept going, my gosh. Eight seats, ten people applied, but we had to keep somebody out of there. Gee, I wonder who that was? How'd that work out? Councilmember Zafar. You don't wanna put me on the committee, I'll run for council.
I'll go ahead and bring him in while we're waiting for Mark, so we're just ready to go as soon as Mark.
Mark is here.
Mark is here.
And Stan will be coming in right now.
Yeah. This is not that abnormal, though, when you think about it. It's.
Things happen.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Stan, can you hear me? Okay.
I'm so sorry, there was a wifi outage in the hotel and the cellular just wouldn't take the, the bandwidth is not enough in Mexico to, to do the Zoom. So I'm, my deepest apologies.
Well, Stan, don't worry about it. No one else showed up tonight. You're the only person that, no, you're not. I'm sorry. We're not going to ask an opening question and we're not gonna do a closing statement. So it's gonna be very simple. Each one of us has one question for you. And then we're gonna caucus amongst us to come up with, who we think are gonna be the four people for the seat. And you will be notified more than, everyone will be notified tomorrow by the city clerk. So the first question for you is, by me, if I can get to the page. Do you have any experience with planning or implementing the smart city principles?
Yes and no. I've been in technology on and off since eighties. I started back in Ukraine, part of Soviet Union, immigrated to United States in nineteen eighty-nine, few weeks before the big quake in San Francisco. And I've been working for AT&amp;T since, well, back then it was Pacific Bell, on and off since ninety-one. So a long time and I'm planning to retire end of this year. So, long story short, I, I was involved in a lot of IoT solutions, which smart cities basically internet of things type of solution. Did I work specifically on smart city solution for AT&amp;T? The answer is no, but I understand a lot of technology. My whole house is very technological. When I'm in Mexico, it's no wifi. It's a little different story. But overall, the reason I wanna do it, I wanna help you to find the right way to make our city smarter, more efficient, and of course, more efficient from cost perspective, right? Because you can do the same thing and one thing will cost a million dollars and one thing will cost hundred thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars. So there's different solutions. Yeah. And I've been a resident since nine. Yeah, and I've been a resident since ninety-nine. And uh, we moved from Danville to San Juan in ninety-nine, so I've been here a long time and uh, we're not going anywhere, so we love the city.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Uh, councilmember Zafar.
Thank you, Stan. Nice to meet you.
Nice.
So the question I have is around volunteering, and um, are you able to share a specific example of um, somewhere where you volunteered? Um, and what was the challenge there? How did you overcome that challenge? And what was success as part of that?
Okay, great question. Thank you. Uh, so I volunteer on behalf of AT&amp;T. Uh, I, I, I did the, I did a lot of chaperoning for when my daughter was in high school. And I also did like junior achievement program with AT&amp;T. And uh, for me, uh, working with adults most of my life. Uh, it's hard to make kids, you know, pay attention and keep them, you know, engaged. I also volunteer on two uh homeowner association boards as a board member. Uh, where I live, there is two associations. One is like for overall community with four subdivisions and then for our subdivision. And uh, I actually took a lead on um, replacing pavement in a canyon view circle. It, it was like basically dirt and no one used it and people just used to walk on the road, which is dangerous because uh, you know, cars go at different rate of speed. And uh, when, when you open, uh, there is a six hundred parcels in a community. And when you ask six hundred people for their opinion, you get six hundred opinions. So, to get the community to one answer that concrete is the longest lasting and the best cover for to meet most of the demands. And also, we had few uh handicapped people in the community who were complaining that there is no ramps for existing. So there was a lot of work in over two years. And I'm happy to report that a few months ago, this project was completed and, and now I see people safely walking. You know, on a sidewalk and cars on the road, the way it should be. So, that's probably my best example.
Thank you.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Hi, Stan. Uh, my question is, uh, what do you think is the greatest need that the city has that can benefit from your experiences in the innovation and technology space?
I, I, well, this, this, this answer will be a little selfish, but I think I think one of the biggest uh, issues is um, some traffic control. Like, there were, there was talk about making entrance and exit on the Norris Canyon Road, and there is a lot of pros and cons for this, and this is more traffic control, not, but also they fly over bridges on Bollinger and Crow Canyon for Iron Horse Trail. Because people come on the bikes, they press the button, it comes on, uh, the light comes on for thirty seconds while the cars are idling and the guy on a bike crosses the, the street in ten seconds and so, and uh, it just in my personal opinion, I think this is something that needs to be addressed because Bollinger, uh, when they built Windermere and Crow Canyon, those are busy streets. And we keep stopping traffic in those Iron Horse Trail, and people wanna use the trail, I understand that, but people also need to go in the cars. As far as technology, um, all sorts of smart uh, smart devices. Not only cameras, but also sensors that can predict the weather or some kind of um danger to the residents of the city or to the buildings. So whatever we can do to notify the public, because we live in a very seismic zone, we all know that. We live in a zone which is prone to fires and winds and the pigeon outages. So the more we can do to better uh predict and notify the public, I think that's, that's gonna be very, very important.
Okay, thank you, Stan.
Thank you. Councilmember Burrows, you have the last question of the night.
Thank you. Uh, hi, Stan.
Hi.
My question is, which city service is most in need of addition or enhancement of technology to provide better services to our residents?
I think, uh, I think we're in need of uh smarter traffic controls. Not only building overpasses, what I mentioned, Bollinger and Crow Canyon. But the lights when, like, I know Bollinger is a major arterial highway. But when I go from Bollinger, uh, I'm on Canyon View Circle and there's no cars and the green light is there for two minutes and there's no cars crossing my intersection, but I'm still stuck. And I understand that it's kinda selfish, but I think better, smarter traffic controls are very, very important, not only because I'm not patient enough to wait, but also for uh, police and emergency services. If we can have more um, more intelligence in our traffic control, that, that would be great. And the, the other thing is, like I mentioned before, is uh, making public aware of dangers. Whether it's a power outage, uh, earthquake prediction, fire, flood, whatever comes our way. Uh, if we can notify the people and they're ready, uh, I think we, we can prevent um tragedies. And, and that's, I think, is very, very important. That's, that's where technology is probably the most critical.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Uh, sorry, we couldn't get you in earlier, but uh, better late than ever, correct? Uh, you don't have to do a closing statement. Uh, we will make a decision probably in the next ten fifteen minutes. And we are going to notify all eleven candidates of what the results are tomorrow. So thanks again for applying. I love your question. Love the one about the delay at the lights. You, I swear you must be talking to the members of the San Juan Golf Club, Men's Club, because I get that so many times. But that's, that's part of improvement. It's something to look at and uh, we'll take it to heart.
Yeah, and again, it's uh, uh, what I'm really good at is uh, cost benefit analysis. If I can save someone thirty seconds and it's gonna cost five million dollars. But if I can save thirty seconds to each resident of the city and it's gonna cost fifty thousand dollars, that's when we say, okay. It's probably a wise way to spend cities money on something, you know, so it's, it's cost benefit. That's, that's, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, thank you, Stan. Uh, we're gonna put this uh, matter before the city council now. I see call-in user once had her hand up for the last hour. We did the public comment on three point one at the beginning. Uh, I was probably confused with public comment on items not on the agenda. But we will let you speak again on three point two, but first, we're going to uh, discuss this between the council on what the uh, we believe are going to be the results for the evening. Uh, okay, I'll got that. Everybody's gone. Uh, normally, it's be a lot easier to fill them out. First of all, before we start chatting, does anybody feel strongly about any particular person or way we should handle this, or is it just going to be, we each go to each person and say uh, who are the, the three that you would select for the first position, which is worst in uh, the field. And then we would go from there to alternate. Go ahead, Sabina.
Yeah, I wanted to just make a quick comment for everybody's benefit as well. So I've been a liaison to this committee for a whole year. It was kind of my child when we formed this committee, so I am very passionate about it. Um, I, I think one, and if you saw my question, one of the things um, which we really need in these committees, in all city committees is for people to also do the work and get their hands dirty. Um, and uh, know that, you know, these committees are about um, the extra hands and the extra support that we need. Uh, and anybody coming on this committee is somebody who's ready to do that. Um, that's why I was asking for a very specific example of volunteering, because this is giving up your time and giving up, you know, um, your, your evening, but not, sometimes it's not, it's not just one hour or one evening. You have to get into subcommittees and, and execute on some of these and that's where we need a lot more, a lot of help as well. So I would say keep that in mind as well as we decide who the best person would be, because we also want people who are willing to do the work um, to make this committee successful.
Let me throw a couple things out before we get into it. One, uh, I would say leave the at-large at this point, because there are three, and I will, I'm gonna throw in a fourth person for you to consider, that is just gonna be at-large. Uh, Sarah is not in the, you can't vote for Sarah on the first one, she's not even in the first one. Uh, but she can be at-large. Patrick Veneer, I believe, is at-large. I don't think we really have him on that. Uh, I had another person down, I can't believe I have Patrick Coleman too, but I thought, I'm not so sure he would have to be at-large.
Sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt, but Christina sent a list email.
Yeah.
You got it.
I, I've got it. I've, I've sitting here um, buried at my desk right now on all these, but uh uh, I don't see, yeah, Patrick isn't listed, so I got that one wrong.
Christina, maybe you wanna share that?
I'll share.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, but at first, that, when we get to the at-large, is to the candidates that are tech, is that what you're asking? Uh, and before you do, I wanna point something out, and I'm not sure how each of you wants to handle it, so I'll just put it on the table. And you can decide. I was a little surprised when Stan said that he's retiring at the end of the year. Now technically, I think he could still go at-large, but this position is through twenty twenty-three. So you consider it when you're considering. How's that sound? Anybody wanna jump out there, or should I?
Go ahead.
That's what I thought. Everybody loves to volunteer. I gotta tell you, I liked everybody. Uh, I did that one time before and tried to get all fifteen on there, went over real well with the uh, with the council. Early on, I liked uh, Sandeep, and I'm not sure why. Maybe it's the way he answered. Uh, remind him of that twelve-year-old, I keep telling you to watch it. Says, yeah, I'm really nervous, and then two minutes later, the entire hall is standing for it. But I liked Sandeep and I liked the way he answered questions. I just, you know, it again, I could take anybody. Uh, I, I really thought Madhuri at the end kinda knocked me out. Um, I'm sorry, Sabina, uh, to keep putting GE people in there, but uh, uh, you know, uh, hopefully you don't take, I like there. Uh, those two, um, the Walker was on already, I liked him too, but now we're into the, the double on GE. I started looking at where these people lived and covering different districts. I looked at a lot of things there, but I get what you're saying, and I'm not sure which one of them will. Uh, but when we get to the at-large, I'm gonna be really open to uh, to a lot of the discussion and what people say is we need to go getter or something like that, that's different from, maybe we don't need four that are work in tech industry. And maybe somebody at-large that isn't. And I, I'd be very interested at how other people feel about it. But those are the three, not that I'm sure they stand out, but, but at the end, those are the three I had uh, that survived my own terrible test.
The third? You said two.
I said the Walker, Sandeep, and Madhuri.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I also had the same three. I had uh, the Walker, Madhuri, then Sandeep.
Well, I didn't put them in any order, I just read them the way I wrote them down there. Because, go ahead. Anyway, Sabina, I really wanted you to go first, but I don't wanna stick it on you, because you go to these, you've been at these meetings. And I know what you're talking about. I have the same thing in the city on the tech group that we have over there.
Yeah, and I'm going, I went a lot by the exact answers that, you know, people were giving. I, I don't know if, I wasn't very clear, and I said I wanted a specific example. Um, and yet I got very vague answer, so I, I think Sandeep, he was very specific about his example, about the, you know, the meetup that he has and and how he's, you know, what the challenge is and how he's doing this, because that, that kind of shows how he's managing that. Think Madhuri with um, GE girls, and I have a little bit of bias because I know how that works and that's like six months of dedicated time.
You cannot know what you know.
Yeah, so um, and you know, when she explained that, um, I think she um, really was specific when she explained that. And then I thought James was also very specific about his um, uh, bike club, right? He's the one in the bike.
Wow, he was, he was in there for me too.
Yeah, cuz he was very, you know, very detailed what he's doing, and that's the kind of stuff which like, you know, takes a lot out of you to organize these things, to manage them and to make. So I was, yeah, going for um, really specifics as well, so um, I think those were the three that jumped at me in, in terms of what I was looking for, in, in terms of giving me very specific answers. Um, I actually thought Monica also had a very specific example around, um, you know, when she talked about um uh, the school, you know, being on the school um, boosters committee and all of that, that also takes a lot out of you.
Okay, are you getting these down, Christina? Okay, so you've got the three that we have, and, and so, did I just, did you go Monica, James? You went four, right, Sabina?
So, yeah, I would say maybe go with Sandeep, uh, Madhuri, and James.
Okay. Wow. I, I never thought we would have been this close. I never. And I'm telling you, that's what I, at the end, anyway. Uh, go ahead, Sridhar. Confuse everything.
To make it easy first, Madhuri.
Yeah.
Madhuri is, uh, okay, so we are cool on that one. And uh, uh, Divakar. I like Divakar. And uh, my only in here tie-up is Sandeep and James. Uh, Sandeep and James, uh, those are the two tie-ups and uh uh, at this point, I think I'll go with James.
Wow, okay. C- I gotta tell you, it, it's up to you guys right now, and Mark, you can chime in too. You got four names on the table that could be all four, unless you wanna go crazy about at-large and throw somebody else in. I mean, do you wanna start a separate discussion on at-large, or do we have four?
So is it possible for us to put two alternates, or is it only one alternate?
Well, there's one alternate and there's one at-large. So there's three on one alternate.
Yeah, so um Okay, so between James and Sandeep, um, I was just struggling because they were both pretty close to my points, so think, but now let's put Sandeep and James, so then we'll go from there.
Okay, let me, before I did this, because what I just did is what uh, you know, we got a nation kind of, I just changed the rules on you. I told you we were gonna do works in tech industry and then go to at-large. Is there anybody you want to add from at-large, or, I mean, do you want to pick the two works in tech industry and the alternate now, and then discuss at-large, or what I was asking is, we've got four people on the table with one fifth name from one person uh, who is actually on it right now anyway. Uh, or do you wanna debate between the four, who gets what, or do you want to just go for the three positions first and then open it up?
So let's go with these three positions and then we can go for at-large. That's mine.
Mark's about ready to say something, cuz I'm not moving forward without some kind of blessing from Sabina. She's the one on this committee.
No, I think let's go with three here and then move into at-large. And we might pick the same person, but.
Okay.
I was gonna say the same, uh, just because.
That was what I set up.
Three initially, two regulars, uh, one alternate, and then we'll do at-large later.
Okay, so, I'm gonna stick, uh, I'm gonna start with Mark and tell me who your two regular are and your alternate.
Well, I'm, I'm still sticking with uh, the Walker and Madhuri and my alternate is Sandeep.
Okay. Moving up. Sridhar.
So, uh, Divakar and Madhuri. And James is alternate.
James?
Yeah.
Okay, and Sabina, you wanna hear from me first?
Yeah.
Chicken. Alright, uh, now I'm, I'm the actually, I'm the, the, the same, Madhuri, uh, the Walker and uh, Sandeep. But.
I just don't want to overcrowd this with GE.
But you know what? Darn it. I knew she was gonna pick the one.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, I liked um, Madhuri and um Sandeep, I really liked Sandeep as well. And then um, then I would, you know, give that vote to the Walker, since we can, everybody's going with two GE folks.
Well, I, I don't wanna just there isn't, I get it when you, you make changes and uh, to committees and you try and shake things up. I hate the idea of starting a committee and kicking two people off the first time they come up. Uh, but uh, I'm of a mind that the way things are going right now, that we, we need to uh we need these people, like, like you're saying, what have you done? I mean, do something. You know, the old line from uh uh, Dina Burnett. Um, so if I'm reading this right, we have Divakar has three. Madhuri has fifty. Uh, and i- the question is Sandeep has two. and you've got him as an alternate. I mean, I would, uh,
And then how many does James have?
Sandeep, I, I would put Sandeep as the alternate, and then let's go into at-large and see where we're at.
And how many does James have?
James has, uh, one, and, uh, Sridhar as an alternate, has him as an alternate. Am I reading that right? I'm trying, I see two and three, yeah, for the, um.
That's the way I read it.
Yeah. And I, I think James has, uh,
So, yeah, James, we can put that, put as an alternate on mine, then, uh, actually, Sandeep as an alternate.
Yes, Sandeep is the alternate, and then we'll go into the at-large. James is still in play. That's the way I'm reading it.
Mayor Hudson, who would you like as the alternate?
Oh, I think, uh, it's, uh, uh, Sandeep. Because there are three votes. Uh, I, I, I could tell you right now, you're not gonna take somebody that's on the committee now and make them an alternate. I mean, does that make sense to all of you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I mean, we're not gonna do that. Um, I just, so now we're at, at-large. Is that okay? What do you got? Who's gonna chime in first?
Wait, so we haven't, we haven't decided yet on the industry, cuz we have what, two and two?
Oh, we have three and four.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, Midori got everybody's vote, and you're the only one that didn't vote for, uh, uh, your, um, fellow employee.
My buddy too, so.
I know, but it was the right thing to do. I get it. Uh, I sat there and I looked at it too, and I go, holy cow, I was the other way. I'm going, I had five people that applied from District Two. And I, I look at geographical equity, I did, we had it with thirty-three people that we picked. I try, you gotta get them from all over town, but anyway, uh, this one might even be tougher. What do you think? I think, well, I shouldn't say that, cuz you had two people with James.
You talking about at-large?
At-large now.
Large.
I, I, uh, I was gonna go with, uh, Sarah or Varun.
Okay, Sridhar.
Uh, Sarah.
Let's do Sarah. I'm not gonna debate this thing. I mean, uh, oddly enough, I was sitting here doing the same thing, the diversity. I mean, I like James a lot, because I know biking's in there. Uh, and I would have done it if we were going for it at-large and do it, but, uh, there's no sense. I mean, we could do every single person here. Every single one of them for at-large. Um, and it makes perfect sense to just, uh, uh, what the heck, what if, how many people? Oh, okay, so we're, I, I mean, there's no reason not to do, uh, uh, what is it, the anonymous, I'm losing the word here. It's getting, the coffee's kicking in. Uh, we have a unanimous vote for Sarah as the at-large member. I'm seeing Sandeep as the alternate, uh, DeWalker and Midori as the, uh, the full-timers, or whatever you call them, the, the real, the real deal. Um, is that what we're reading tonight?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Do I have a motion to do that through twenty twenty-three?
I'm.
Can move.
Okay, well, you can both move, but Sridhar beat you to it, so we got, uh, motion, Verrose, seconds of our, uh, any further comments on who we're picking? If not.
We've done pretty good with fifty-fifty.
On shock.
Diversity in.
Oh, yeah, no.
Men and women.
Yeah, I, well, I'll tell you what, it's, that was what came up. Uh, I was sitting here looking at it and where they lived and the different stuff that they ran. I, I'm dead serious. I could put every one of these people on a committee, but then the person who is the liaison from the council might have, go a little crazy if she found every one of her coworkers in the committee telling her what to do. Anyway, we need a roll call vote, Christina.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Verrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Zafar?
Yes.
And Mayor Hudson.
Yes. Okay, that takes care of that. That's, let's move on to item three point two. And believe it or not, we have a attendee that wishes to speak for the public comment for three point two, not three point one, but three point two. So let's let her in and let's hear what's going on for, we're going to do no interviews, but we're going to decide on the open space, I believe. Yes, go ahead, caller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Uh, Mayor Hu- Mayor Hudson, I actually spoke last time for public comment. This time I would like to speak to three point one. I was deprived of one opportunity to speak.
Wait, let me stop you right there. When public comment closed and you started to speak, I said you actually are speaking to three point one, but go ahead.
To three point one, okay.
Yeah, cuz you said something like you don't want, I, I remember what you were saying at the time. But it was actually three point one that you were discussing. You wanted to talk about it in a public comment, but public comment, I made it clear, was for an item not on the agenda, and then you went into three point one. I said, good, you did it perfect. So let, if you wanna do three point one again, you can, but we need you to have three point two.
Okay, um, I just think that this, uh, committee is really not necessary, um, because we just really need to have a city that people can feel comfortable living in. To have so much wired, uh, smart city just, uh, lends our entire city to a habitat for Big Brother and, and, um, tyranny. Also, I, I, I feel kind of, if I were councilmembers afar, I would feel uncomfortable, because right now you have two main members from GE, and it sounds like councilmember Zafar works for GE. I, I just feel that there's a lot of conflict of interest, and also, um, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable at all with this committee. I, I really wish that you guys will not have this kind of committee. It just sounds like it's going to start something that is going to manage everyone's life and, you know, restrict what people can do or cannot do, and promote business for GE, which is a five G, uh, five G-ready infrastructure, and then it will, you know, come with, uh, driverless cars and all that. I, I, I just, I, I object to this committee, period. Thank you.
Okay, understood. Um, actually, uh, the autonomous, a couple of points, the autonomous cars, the committee I'm on. Though technology will probably touch it also. I spent an hour discussing that, uh, today with the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. And the, the smart city question, don't, don't be fooled by it so much. I picked it out of their, um, resumes, no, I get their applications. Uh, I was amazed that eight or nine of them had smart cities. Okay, well, tell us about what you know about smart cities. To me, it's a term, uh, it's no more than where are we heading in the future and uh, how do you think we should proceed? But anyway, we are on to three point two. Three point two, gentlemen, there are three people that applied. Um, are there any questions you have before we start discussing it? This is for a alternate member. Because I have a very strong opinion on this. Anyone else? Seeing none, would you like to hear it?
Yes, I mean.
I, I'm, uh, I was absolutely knocked out by this guy. I, I haven't met him in the last twelve, fifteen years. Uh, but he is a director of Recreation Arts and Community Service Department, Danville, and I did some, uh, due diligence on this person, and everyone that talks about him, it just is the highest character, and, and we're very fortunate to have him. He lives here. Unfortunately for him, he works in Danville, but if we can steal him, what the heck? And that's, uh, Henry Perez Alonso. Uh, I like him a lot. I, I make no bones about it.
Yeah.
That's my personal feeling. I'll be voting for him, and I'll leave it up to the three of you to beat each other off. Anyone else?
I think Henry definitely is going to be, uh, we, it, it, like, I, I know him personally, uh, in a sense. In, in a sense, like, uh, I work with him, oh, sorry, uh, Sabina wanted to speak, okay, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. No, you're good. She just laughing at you. Conflict of interest, Sridhar. No, go ahead.
Not personally, okay, let me make it like through the community services and in the Danville especially.
Yeah.
But I've been, uh, looking at his, uh, community services and, uh, as a person, was and all that, definitely that is going to be like, good choice for, uh, our city, that with all that great experience that he have, that he's going to bring that to our, uh, San Ramon city, so.
Great. I, I dare you to put a campaign sign in one of his parks. I can tell you where you can pick it up, but you gotta go through him. Okay, Mark, you got anything? Then we'll finish with Sabina.
Um, Henry was my clear choice, uh, of the three candidates, and, uh, of course, without doing interviews, all I have to go on is the information provided in the packets. Uh, and I, you know, tried to look into between the lines and things like that, but, um, clearly, to me, it was Henry of the three.
Yeah. Sabina?
I agree with all three of you. I think Henry's got the right experience, the background, you know, um, it's, I would say he's unfortunate he works in Danville, but he lives in San Ramon, and so we will steal some of that brain power, because Danville is just as wonderful a city, so, yeah, you know, um, I think that saves a lot for his experience and what he's done and what he can do as a resident of San Ramon, so, um, I, I really appreciate that he's applying for this position, so that'll be great, so.
So we have a, a motion so far, and a, a second for Rose to appoint Henry through July of twenty twenty-two.
Let's.
So we used to do that with Scott Haggerty. He's gone now.
Henry to the open.
One thing for sure, though, uh, Christina, do not CC Joe Calabrio. Anyway, it, do I have a motion on, and it's getting.
I just moved to.
So far, moves, Verrose seconds, he's your friend, you better second it. Uh, roll call vote unless there's further discussion.
Remember, Verose, you did second. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I second.
Thank you, thank you.
Didn't believe me.
Councilmember Armstrong? Councilmember Verose?
Yes.
Councilmember Zafar?
Yes.
And Mayor Hudson?
Yes. Okay, if there's no other witty comments or anything anybody wants to make, thank you very much. I know this was difficult. I cannot wait till we can actually meet, uh, and not do these things like this. Uh, it's, you know, trying to do them on the fly, you never know how many people are gonna apply. I thought, uh, Christina, you handled that great with Stan. How many times that happens is amazing, that, uh, for whatever reason, people just don't make it when it's time to make it. So, uh, we are adjourned, or don't know when the next special meeting is, unless are we doing a special meeting Thursday? No, nothing this week?
Not the, the next meeting is the regularly scheduled meeting on February ninth.
That's the one that we're adjourned to. Good night, enjoy yourself.
Good night. Thank you, everyone. Good night.